Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Town of Southridge Special Town Council Meeting on Monday, March 7, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. here in the McKinnon Council Chambers. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
I'd like to suspend the rules to add an agenda item, a citizens forum.
I'll take that in a moment. I need to call the roll first.
Okay.
Okay. Council Vice Chair Adams will be assuming some of the duties tonight of the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselor Adams is present. Counselor Catrona?
Excused.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor Dow?
Present.
Counselor Jovan?
Present.
Counselor Lozo?
Present.
Counselor Marcati?
Present.
Counselor Ryan?
Present.
Counselor Steves?
Present.
Very good. We have a quorum. Counsel Marcati.
Okay, thank you. It says here our Pledge of Allegiance was number three, so I jumped ahead of you myself. I would just like to add an agenda item to add a citizens forum to tonight's meeting.
I'll second it.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven to one. Motion carries. Okay. So Agenda Item 3A would be citizens forum. Are there any citizens that would like to approach the podium to speak on any issue not on the agenda tonight? Very good. Agenda item number four. Vote to establish a capital stabilization fund as allowed under Master General laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, the purpose of which would be to fund capital projects, purchases, and repairs, and the payment of capital debt service. A two-thirds vote of the council is required.
motion moved.
Second.
Very good. Counsel Marcati.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, when the Capital Planning Committee met, we recommended that we create such a fund. Everyone received the information in your packet on potential revenue sources and why we recommended it, that it would create one fund for all of our capital activity. I know that you all received the DLS informational guideline release explaining that the municipalities and districts may create one or more stabilization funds under the Modern Municipal Act, I'm having a hard time speaking tonight, made for four significant changes. First, it eliminated caps on the amount that could be appropriated into the fund. Second, appropriations made into the fund may now be approved by a majority vote instead of a two-thirds vote. Third, the local treasurer has a broader range of investment options. And finally, a new local acceptance provision was added as the fourth paragraph. The body by two-thirds vote may dedicate to a stabilization fund certain revenue streams. I also took a look at a summary of the stabilization fund from the DLS. Because the question has to be asked, why do we want to create a capital stabilization fund? It's also known as a special purpose stabilization fund. It's a fund for municipalities who are criticized for operating in perpetual crisis mode or being generally short-sighted. So instead of us depending on free cash every year and setting aside a portion of our operating budget, it would be better planning if we built a fund to match our needs. Also, the town treasurer shall be the custodian of all such funds and may deposit the proceeds and interest shall be added to and become part of the fund. The funds can provide an effective planning tool. For example, a special purpose stabilization fund would be one created to supplement state reimbursements received under Chapter 90, cover the costs of street improvement, could be established solely to pay for building, repair, and maintenance. We may set up a fund to finance a vehicle replacement program. A special purpose stabilization fund could help community to think long-term. Any program to replace vehicles and maintain buildings or improve roads requires ongoing evaluations of the assets, calculations of long-term project costs. It would save us money instead of borrowing for certain items which would add interest payments that we would have to pay. We would have funds available. It would help us manage debt. A plan to accumulate cash over time and pay outright for moderate-range capital expenditure helps preserve debt capacity and for major high-dollar purchases or projects such as a fire station. And build residents' confidence in the government. It directly addresses residents' concerns and provides assurances that money appropriated for a particular purpose will be used for that purpose and not be diverted. So, and there are three options for building up the balance, but tonight, I guess if we want to get into that, okay. But right now, our recommendation was to create a stabilization fund, and so that's why I asked to put it on tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Discussion. Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a good idea. I've seen this in some of the other towns that I've covered as a reporter over the years. And I think that, I guess one question that I would have through you or to anyone else who's sitting here, but to you specifically, Mike, is that up on your memo here, you list a whole long list of things that we would possibly use as revenue sources. And I noticed that whatever we decide to dedicate to it, the text in your farther down in the document mentions that it has to be at least 25% of the dedicated source. So if you're thinking of that, what would you, which of these particular sources would you prioritize to go into this particular fund? And why?
Well, these are potential revenue sources. I think it would be up to the town council which ones we would want to choose, working together with the town manager and the finance director. So I only mentioned that these are possible sources. I know we have a million dollars in a landfill royalty account. We have some free cash. Well, you can read the whole list, but it was just a suggestion of potential revenue sources.
So when you proposed the idea and you guys discussed it, were you thinking about a specific figure to start with?
I thought it would be a good idea to start right now.
No, I meant a figure as in sum of money.
Pardon?
A sum of money to start with. We have to start with something.
Well, tonight, I thought we would just discuss creating the fund to begin with, and then we didn't have to jump into a certain amount right away. If you wanted to, we have landfill royalty account of a million dollars, so 25% of that would be something we could put in there, or some of these other revenue sources could be used. But it's something that could be built up over time.
Well, I know that, yeah.
As you read this informational guideline, at one time, I believe it was, we had to, we could only go 10% of the total budget, but that has been eliminated now. So we can continue to put money into this fund. And another good feature of it is that any interest that we make off this fund after it's invested would also go back into the fund. And also, if we dedicate a certain portion, we can always, such as a proposition two and a half, we can always stop that at any time in the future with a two-thirds vote.
And I guess to you, to the manager, what's your consideration of doing this and your thoughts about the sources that he suggests?
So we, excuse me, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Counsel Steves and the rest of the members of the body, I don't think it's a bad idea to segregate and have a dedicated fund as the subcommittee talked about during capital planning. The one thing that I might suggest is that you create a dedicated revenue source, much like when we talked about payment management, we talked about using the local option taxes from marijuana to fund that. So one of the things I spoke very briefly to Ms. Harnoyes about, but we've talked about it in the past, I know I have, and we brought it up a little bit at the committee, the only financial policies that I found that I used last year and this year, when we look at our budget, were the ones that were dated back in 2013 by then-manager Clark. And there are some guidelines for debt policy, capital policy, reserve, and stabilization policy. My suggestion might be that you create a policy relative to that fund. If you establish the fund, revisit what you want to do with stabilization and some of your other obligations such as OPEB, pension, and then say after you fund these, take so much of your free cash or other monies that you may get in reimbursements and dedicate it and have a goal to how much you want to set aside a year or what balance you want to put aside. You currently, the current capital policy is asking that the town should make annual capital expenditures close to, well, equal to at least seven and a half to eight percent of the operating budget. So we have about a $60 million budget, so you're looking at just under $5 million. It's suggesting, based on the policy director from the stabilization fund, that we should be maintaining a stabilization fund which is 5% of our general operating revenues, which would be, you know, even a smaller amount. So you'd be setting aside more for capital than you would for your regular stabilization fund. So I would just suggest that it might be worthwhile to look at all of these policies that I've found unless there's something I'm missing, but they haven't been updated in a while, and they talk about back when a community had an A-plus rating and how to get to the target of an double A-minus. So it might be worth revisiting all of these should you create this, establish this new stabilization fund. Look at all of your financial policies and determine methodology for funding.
Thank you.
Counsel Jovan?
No, they were up for us then.
Okay. Counsel Lozo?
Yeah, I'm in favor of, I'm a fan of stabilization accounts. Airmarking money to a specific use controls the free spending of a government by earmarking it. If you created your capital improvement plan, which I think the finance director and committee did a good job, I think what we have to, I'm not interested in talking about where the money is going to come from tonight. I think the question in front of us right now is, do you want to have a stabilization and to design it where it works for capital? And I'm a big fan of this. I have some questions as far as if we put a capital improvement plan together and we have a stabilization, is it an automatic expenditure by the department head once it's in a stabilization fund? Or does it have to come back to us for another vote to cover it out of stabilization?
Well, actually, there's no expenditures that are going to be made directly out of the stabilization.
Okay.
So you'd make an appropriation, two-thirds appropriation of the council out of the stabilization fund to that specific capital project or purchase that you want to make.
Thank you. That answers my question. I'm totally in favor of this. I think it's a good planning tool where, in a lot of cases in past years, free cash became at the end of the year, what do we have and what can we spend? I think what this does is it puts control on the spending and it puts the capital in the forefront on behalf of the department heads that they need, the real needs of capital, that if we fund it and we get a funding source, which we can discuss that later, I think it's a great idea. So I'm fully in favor of this. I will be voting in the affirmative. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, actually, I know. Would this, could this have any effect on the town's ability to fund its current liabilities, current stabilization fund, OPEB, et cetera?
Well, I was doing a little bit of research on this, and I find that what some of the communities that have a capital stabilization, mostly they use free cash to fund it. So say you have, your free cash is certified from this year, you might want to put, say, like 10% into your general stabilization, 5% into your capital stabilization. Some people at the end of the year, if they don't have any other obligations, they might put the remaining free cash into the capital stabilization. They return any unused capital projects, which is what was on Counsel Marcati's list too, in there if they haven't been used. Like one community, if they haven't been used within three years and there's no active contract, then the balance would return to the capital stabilization fund.
Thank you. Actually, that helps provide a lot of perspective on this because I support the concept, but my thing is I want to make sure we have a process in place as to make sure we meet the current obligations of our other funds first. So setting up a process that would say the remainder of free cash after it's been appropriated to stabilization or to our OPEB liabilities would be put into capital stabilization, which could then be used for capital projects is something I could get behind, but I would want to see a little bit more of a process. As Mr., as Manager McCall pointed out, I think I'd feel more comfortable before taking a two-thirds affirmative vote, having more of the details and that funding source verified before we take this vote. That's just me personally. But I support the concept. I just think I would want more information about what the process is going to be and what that direct funding source is going to be.
Counsel? Anyone else? Counsel Jovan?
Thank you. Through you, I certainly support some type of stabilization fund. For me, it does come down to how do you sustain the funding of that source? So, you know, I would be reluctant to, for instance, put like a sale of a building or anything like that because that's a one-time, one-time funding source. So I think it's really the recurring type of income that you might have throughout budget processes that you can develop into that fund. Because once it's gone, it's gone, you know? So if you set that target for that, certainly you could use that as one-time expenses. So as far as regular stabilization, I know we had a target. Do you know where we are at the target of our existing stabilization fund right now? As far as a percentage?
Sure. Through the chair, we're about 8.1% of our annual budget.
Currently, not stabilization?
Currently, yes.
Which is a very healthy number, correct?
Yes. We had said we wanted to be at least at 5%.
Okay. So at that point where you're at 8%, now you could start taking a look at free cash and say, okay, I could put a bigger percentage into from free cash as long as we maintain that fiscal policy of stabilization, correct?
Yes.
Okay. How do you think, through you, Mr. Chairman, how would you think funding a certain percentage out of the regular budget into a stabilization fund? Is that something that other towns do to say out of a regular operating budget to say we target a half a percent of the regular operating budget for a stabilization?
That I didn't come across. There weren't a lot of communities that responded to me, maybe like three or four. And like I said, the majority of them use the free cash or unused capital. I didn't run across anybody that does a certain percentage of their budget towards the stabilization fund.
Or even just a budget line item that goes into on a yearly basis? Say it's $100,000 into the stabilization? Nothing like that?
I didn't see any, but we've done that in the past, too. We've put some monies into the OPEB funding from the budget, so I don't see why we couldn't do something like that as well.
Okay. And last question, as far as long-term capital projects and short-term capital projects, would they be handled the same out of a stabilization account such as this? Say, you know, because if you have a building project, say, that is a unique circumstance that wouldn't typically go out of your capital stabilization, correct?
Right. I think we'd have to keep in mind what we could put, the balance that we'd have in there. Obviously, we could only fund up to the balance. So I just also wanted to comment, too, you know, this fund wouldn't include all payments of debt service and everything because there wouldn't be enough to cover everything. You know, we still have our debt service budget. So as we put the money in there, I think it would give us a, you know, once we look at there, the amount of money that we're putting in there, then we can plan better, I believe, to say, okay, well, we'll say we have, you know, like right now, we have 2.8 million in free cash. Okay, let's put a million dollars into the, it's just totally an example, into the capital stabilization fund. Okay, so then we have our capital requests that come in. We could say, okay, we have this amount of money in here. I think it'll help us to better prioritize instead of saying, okay, we have all of this free cash, how are we going to divvy it up and where are we going to put it? I actually think it's a very good idea. And, you know, just to, just to say, too, I know we don't even have to decide how much we'd want to put in right now or anything, but just to get the vote there to see if the council wants to support it, we can at least establish it. And I like the town manager's idea of bringing to subcommittee the different policies that we have. We can kind of firm those up, and then we could come back and say, okay, well, this is what we adopted for our policies, maybe different percentages or things, and then we can move forward. Just my thoughts.
And last question. When it comes to a stabilization fund, can you set also as a council policy on that capital stabilization that you wouldn't zero out the balance, you would try to keep some percentage of the total balance to go year to year? I mean, would that be something that a council could, so you wouldn't say, okay, I have a capital stabilization, and you say, say we have it at 1.5 million that we've built up and we didn't, whatever years you have in there, that you didn't say, okay, one council decides, hey, we're going to zero that out and spend everything where, you know, fiscal climates change and we're fortunate this year at the healthy free cash that we have, but that's not the norm.
Correct.
Nor should it be the norm that we're at that high. So I think it's a great idea. It's just some other policy to fit within council to food for thought. As far as, I think, when you say go back to subcommittee as far as drafting the policy itself, it's great to set the fund, then we can develop a policy through that fund as well, correct?
Right. And I would agree with that because we've also had a study done with our water and sewer enterprise funds, and they recommended at the time that we keep in like a minimum of around a million dollars in there. So that would go to what Counsel Jovan is saying, you don't want to zero that out. I mean, you could, but we may want to establish a floor.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel? Anyone else? Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I do agree with you on the debt services and maybe removing that. I'm not really sure even about the repairs. I'm not sure, and maybe Counsel Marcati could say, what type of repairs are we looking at besides just plain purchases, capital purchases?
Well, purchase of vehicles and...
Just repairs of that?
And if they need, yeah.
Okay. So it'd be kind of like in one lump sum for all repairs of vehicles? Would that be something that you would look at? Like, you couldn't do it for an ambulance or a, you know, cruiser or anything like that. You put it into one fund? Is that what you're looking at?
I think what we also want to keep in mind, too, is the definition that the town council adopted for the capital, which would be at least $10,000 and a useful life of three years or more. So it can encompass any of these types. It can go for repairs, actual cruisers, for example, for equipment, payment of debt service, that could all be within the fund. What's going to happen is the, you know, the town manager will make recommendations to the subcommittees and then to the town council, and then the town council will decide what the priorities are for use of the fund.
Would you recommend leaving the repairs in there?
I would, I would think so if it's a major, if it's a major repair or something like, say, we were doing renovations on the town hall. I think something like that would be appropriate.
Okay. Just to follow up, some more schools. I know we receive a certain amount of money for school every year. It's usually almost half our budget goes into schools. Is that something, would school capital projects be involved in that as well? Or if you're talking, let's just say 10%, are you talking $6 million or are you talking $3 million? Because if you add the schools in there with all the money that we do receive from the state and all that kind of stuff, is that included or is that going to be separate?
Well, that would, that would be part of the whole fund because say our budget's $60 million, and we'd say, okay, 5% of the $60 million, and that would include both town and school. However, the town council would want to prioritize that.
Okay.
And you don't have to, you know, it doesn't have to be 5%. That's just an example.
Well, that's what I was just trying to figure out because I know a lot of that money, obviously, half that money goes over to the schools and is, are they included in this process? So another thing, not like Counsel Jovan, there are certain things that I wouldn't be in favor of over here, but I guess we go piecemeal that, especially like the royalty funds. I'm not really a big fan of that, moving that money. But is there any fallback that you see by setting something like this up?
No, I don't think so. And I think as long as we give ourselves enough time to talk about what types of funding we want to put in there, and then it's going to come here in order to transfer the funding in. It is by a majority to appropriate the money in, and then it's a two-thirds to appropriate the money out.
And last, it's more a statement or a question, I heard the town manager say something about our credit rating, and apologize for not hearing the town manager, but this would help our credit rating, correct? Or would it not? By setting something like this up?
Well, actually, I think, I think it would show that we have good fiscal policies, absolutely. I would think that it can only help.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Steves, then Counsel Lozo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick questions. One of them is following up on what Counsel Jovan said a couple of minutes ago. I was thinking that when you mentioned the idea of having like a dedicated 100,000 bucks, would it be possible, would it be legal to just take whatever we have left, say, in the council reserve and automatically dedicate it to this fund?
It would be, you know, for any, you can transfer money in there for any lawful purpose, so absolutely if the council would want to do that, yes.
What would happen if we dedicated, let's say, a million five of this fund every year from free cash? What would, what would the limitations be on the rest of the free cash that's there?
Well, I guess what I would suggest maybe is not a dollar amount because you don't know, maybe a percentage.
Yeah, right.
And the rest of the free cash could be used for any purpose.
Because I was thinking about it, because it seems to me like if we're trying to set up a capital fund specifically for capital projects and we're already using the free cash as essentially our capital fund, I'm just trying to figure out what we would, what the purpose of having the double fund would be at that point.
I guess what I would say normally, you know, because of different circumstances in this last year or two, the free cash has actually been certified a little bit later.
Right.
But if we could get it certified earlier, then I would say you appropriate, like say in the fall, appropriate a certain percentage of that right then after it's certified into the capital stabilization. And then as the capital budgets come up, then you know what your balance is in there and see what you want to fund. I think that that timing would help for the future.
I can understand that. Then, but also thinking the fact that to take money out still requires a two-thirds majority, but to use free cash money only requires a simple majority.
I'm sorry, say that last part of it again.
But to use free cash money only requires a simple majority. So that would seem like it's actually creating an extra hurdle for using, for using funds for capital projects as opposed to what we do now with just using free cash.
That might be true, but, you know, capital projects are pretty important, so to be able, be able to obtain a two-thirds, I think, you know, kind of makes sense anyway. It gives an extra scrutiny to it. I don't necessarily look at it as a bad thing either.
True. I mean, it's not like we, our votes aren't usually majority, aren't usually unanimous anyway, but they can, they can even pass have-not ban, but they usually have been. And also, I was thinking this, it's this, if we create, if we create this, how bound are the schools to using it for their capital projects?
Well, again, that would be totally up to the town council to decide. So if the manager wanted, say, like there is a million five in this account, we want it to use a million dollars, the town manager will recommend in his capital budget what he feels should be funded. And if there's something in there for schools that you wouldn't want to fund or, you know, vice versa or whatever, then the council can turn that down, and he could come back with a different recommendation.
Okay. And what would you recommend if we were to set up, say, let's say, half of the free cash to this fund? What would you recommend using the rest of free cash for?
Well, I guess we would keep it aside for anything unexpected that might come up. Hopefully, if that doesn't happen, then we have a couple of options. We could let it roll over into the next year, so you'd have some additional free cash just in case you might have a bad year with your revenues or something like that. And maybe we add a little bit more to either the capital or regular stabilization fund, or we take some to do some additional funding for OPEB. Or maybe even pension. You know, we might want to keep thinking about that, too, because I think it was maybe 2034 is when pensions should be fully funded, but it keeps going out now, you know, depending upon the investments and everything, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Counsel? Great. Counsel Lozo?
Great, Counsel Lozlo.
I think what we're doing here is, is, is trying to find funding sources, which I, I expect we're going to get into that later. This account is being created to salt some money away for capital. That's it. The council will determine what to put in and when to take it out. That's simple. There are no secret hatch doors on this. This creates fiscal, fiscal stability. When we have a few extra dollars, and I know that Counsel Jovan, when we did the airport, we were supposed to put up a portion, and then all of a sudden they sent us a letter and said, your portion's not needed, we're funding all of it. This money floated. We, at that point, you could turn around and say, I want it in free cash. No, let's put it in capital stabilization account because we have a lot of capital to deal with and it makes for better planning. And then you say, well, right away you bring up the schools. Well, the town is the landlord of those buildings and we're responsible for the safety and the construction of those buildings. And as the definition of $10,000 in so many years gives you your definition of capital, then now we know what we can use on capital. If it's not up to $10,000 or going to be around for X amount of years, you cannot use capital money. You'll have to find it somewhere else. This just gives you an area to salt some money away for your capital. So when capital comes in, you don't get steamrolled and all of a sudden last minute, it's free cash, free cash, free cash. I think this is a great management tool for the council and the manager with the department head. So again, this is an area to put some money aside for your capital. Instead of being, hurry up, we need to do this, where are we going to get the money? You know, and I think it puts a planning tool in the council's hands. And with the two-thirds vote, it, it's tough to withdraw. Thank you.
Ms. Arnold.
If I could, I, I think Counsel Lozlo makes a very good point too. Like, say, say the airport does come to us and, and needs a grant match or economic development or something like that. Instead of trying to determine, like you said, do we have any free cash? Is it certified? You know, how much do we have? What is it dedicated for? We can look at the capital stabilization, say, okay, what do we have in there? And I think other communities and, and even the bond rating agencies, whatever, would say, you know, like you said, that's a very good planning tool that we could have that, that available instead of just trying to scurry around and come up with it.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Very good. Anyone else? Counsel Steves.
That sparks another idea. Has, have you ever heard of anybody who created a grant match stabilization fund specifically for that purpose?
I have not.
It's the first time, it's the first time I've thought of it or heard of it either. I was just curious because you mentioned, I went, oh, maybe we could do that too. Just an idea.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just have one question. If we open the stabilization fund account, are we going to close the free cash account? Or is it going to stay open as well? We're going to have both accounts?
Well, the free cash account will stay open until all the funds are appropriated from it or until the end of the fiscal year.
And, and after that, we'll close it down?
Yep, the free cash will close at the end of the fiscal year if you don't appropriate it all. And then whatever's left over becomes certified for the next year.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Very good, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lozlo?
Yes.
Counsel Marcati?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams? H. Joe?
Very good. Motion passes. Agenda item number five. Review and discuss the results and recommendations of the Charter Review Committee and take any action thereof. I'd like to start by saying that I have been in communication with Attorney Goldberg of KP Law and that she's vetting the document as we speak. Hopefully tonight I'll get a finalized version of the document up until today's work. If anything should happen to change today, I'll have to resubmit it and have anything vetted that needs to be vetted and then we'll come back with a further document. So I intend to put this to bed next week, ultimately, as far as that goes. At this point, I think Counsel Steves, you have something you'd like to talk about?
I do, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Over the course of the process of charter review and even before then, it's a lot of stuff that I've been reading. I've been thinking about following the idea as I pass that to everybody. A, it's called, it's a rights of nature section for the charter. I, I'm not sure necessarily whether this would go into the charter or into the bylaws. I think the charter would be stronger, that's why I suggested putting it here. But the basic principle is based off of something that the voters in Toledo, Ohio passed to protect Lake Erie. And I'm, and I took, so I took most of the wording pretty much directly from their bylaw that passed with some phrasing, phrasing changes to change obviously Lake Erie to the Quinne Bog River. And I threw in the section about, the, the section 13-1-2, the rights of surrounding land, to address the idea primarily of forest lands that I think need to be, we need to take more care of our river and our forest lands and the tributaries and those kinds of things that often do not get considered adequately by existing laws and do not, I don't think that they, they get an adequate say in the fact that they have, that we rely on them for our survival, yet they have virtually no representation in the law. That was the basic gist of this whole section here. And as you can see, it's, it's a little bit on the long side, but it is all, is all actually with, with tweaking for what I thought was relevant for our specific community. It is almost all word for word from the Toledo law that did pass on the ballot. So, and I wanted to throw it out here to see what people thought. I think it's something that we could, as a community, do to, to protect our environment better than we already do.
What's that?
At the moment, yes.
Great. Discussion. Counsel Jovan?
Through you. Could you just explain the process again? Because I'm just confused where we're at here. So we've had several meetings that we talked about what changes that, that, that we were going to have forth through the-
That's right.
Charter review. We never took a vote about whether we accepted all the document, did we?
No, that would be the, the final vote.
So what is Attorney Goldberg actually doing? Is she just looking to see what provision? Could you just explain the process to me?
Certainly.
I, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page because I also thought that we were going to do a public hearing and all that. And I, I think if Counsel Steves is bringing this up as an amendment to the charter-
Yes.
That this takes a lot of dialogue to add in. And thank you for the work, but I would really want to be able to study this and look at this before we adopt a Quinne Bog Bill of Rights. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but-
I would, I would expect us to do that, absolutely.
That, that is quite lengthy to add as a charter amendment to put on. So if you could just explain this to me, I'd appreciate it.
I've been trying to get everything that we've done so far at the various meetings to Attorney Goldberg to vet. And what she's basically doing is she's finding, again, a couple of minor punctuation changes that need to be made. But she's also making changes in the wording, some of the wording to maintain consistency throughout the document that we missed. She's also making sure that, that basically things are, are legal, for lack of a better term, that we're not doing anything that we can't do. We're not trying to do anything that we can't do. And she's taken the changes that were documented by the Charter Review Committee and also changes that we made and specifically, and inserted those into the document as well. And aside from this document here, up until this afternoon, I was planning on getting the document to the council to review over the coming week. And then we'd vote to accept the document as amended and then send it forward to the attorney to put it into proper language to bring to the State House so that they could do what it is that they need to do to make sure that we're okay, bring it to the governor. And then tonight, what we need to do is basically document how we choose to vote on it because we can vote as a doc, we can vote on the document as a whole or we can choose to vote on sections of the document at a time in a, a line item or a line item budget kind of situation. And we can discuss that as well this evening. And proper language would be coming from the attorney for that as well.
As a follow-up question for the vote, so we're not taking any votes this evening?
Not to, not to accept on a permanent basis the changes, no. That would be next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got anything else?
No, I said, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Lozlo, then Counsel Ryan.
At the last meeting, we were discussing the charter and residency and all this. I know the questions that were being brought up were, did we overstep our bounds? And with some of the issues in re-conforming the charter, that would constitute a charter, elected charter commission. And I thought the next step was we were going to get those answers. Did we, did we overstep our power as a council? And in other words, we had a charter revision committee to it. We thought maybe we went too far where we needed a charter, elected charter commission. And that question was posed, and that's when the attorney's discussion came up. The one thing I don't want to do is rush this to get it on the ballot or anything like this. This, this new Bill of Rights, it's a lot to digest. I'd like to see what the impact is to the community, businesses included. Not saying it's a bad thing, I just don't know if it belongs in the charter or if it belongs at that conservation. It's something, another amendment that we need to work on. So in other words, I, I'm not interested in rushing this through to a vote to get it on the ballot this, this June. What I'm really would like to do is make sure we cross it, dot the i's. And then if, if we vote at the next election or whatever, I would feel much more comfortable than, than hurrying it up, especially with, you know, this new one coming up and, you know, with the residency that we discussed-
Right.
In depth, so I, I, just my opinion. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
That's fine, very good. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I, I also have a follow-up. I know we discussed whether or not there was, the attorney was going to look into whether we could actually split up the question itself. Did we get any feedback on that?
She told us, the attorney told us that it was up to us to decide if we wanted to do a, a line item-
Okay.
Type of acceptance of amended items or take the document as a whole.
So that means if we vote on the, if we do it line item by line item, section by section, is that how it would have to appear on the ballot? Section by section? Or would we have to?
That would be up to us to decide.
Okay. All right, that's my conclusion, my thoughts for right now.
Okay, very good. Counsel Steves, then Counsel Jovan.
Thank you. I completely agree with you, Scott, about the idea of that. I don't, I don't want to rush this through because I don't, I want us to consider it. And I realize that it's kind of a last-minute thing and I've been thinking about it for a while, finally get to put it on paper. And so I wonder, I do want to do it right, absolutely. I don't want to rush this through because it is an extensive change. And as you, as you mentioned, I was wondering if, so just to clarify, did Attorney Goldberg mention that it would be okay for us to take the larger sections of the changes and just have them stand out as questions and have like everything else that are just the minor everyday, like wording change here or there? That doesn't change the real meaning of it? We could just like kind of clump them all together and say, and minor wording changes here, 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 and here?
It's my understanding that, that minutia could be one section that we vote on and ask the people to vote on or not.
Yeah.
And major sections, that line item kind of checklist, we could decide to go through as well.
That's what I was thinking.
She said she'd be willing to work with us either way. And she could, she could put it together. She did say, in answer to an, an earlier question, she did say that everything that she saw so far looked okay.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel Marcati? I'm sorry, I said Counsel Jovan.
He had his hand up first, I'll defer him.
Okay.
My good friend.
Counsel Marcati.
My good friend, Counsel Marcati.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Jovan. Through you, Mr. Chairman, I, I looked at the charter that we have here and there were still some issues that I have with some of the things that we were discussing. I know we haven't really finalized it yet, that's why I would like to speak to it again. Such as 4.3 and 1, where we're adding members to different boards. We can barely get people to serve on boards now, so it would be difficult to add members to these boards. The only one that makes sense to me is the planning board to reduce it because that would help them out a lot. For, and that would go for 9.11 to the liquor board. The town manager's transfers, I still say that with this type of language on day one, and that would be 10.12.1, on day one of the new fiscal year, anything that's unencumbered, the town manager could move around. If he didn't like the budget, he could say, well, I'm going to change the budget and move this here and there. It's kind of like a little vague, a little open-ended for, for me to have it just, anything that's unencumbered. So that's one area that I think we should reconsider. And finally, 12.33, we did, I, I'm positive we changed, we completely struck that and it's, yet it's still here, 12.33. Because we had discussed that the way this is worded, a person would go out and get signatures for a petition and the way this is worded, once the town council voted, they'd have to go back out and do the same thing again and get another 5% of the voters. So we completely deleted that, but yet in here, it's still, it's still here worded in this document. As far as how the vote goes, how we would vote on this, if, whatever we do, I'm pretty sure we're going to have to send out something to the red, to the voters of town to tell them what's in this document, I believe. So that's going to be something we have to think about. I like what Counsel Steves wrote here. I'm not sure it belongs in the charter. To me, the charter is about town government, but I do like what he wrote here. I'm all for an ecological Bill of Rights. Maybe the zoning bylaw, or not the zoning, but the code of bylaws, something like that would be a better place for this. So that's all I have for now, thank you.
Very good. Counsel Jovan?
Thank you. Through you, to follow up on what Counsel Marcati just stated about this Bill of Rights. Again, I, I don't, just a quick glance at this, I don't believe it belongs in a charter because you, you have enforcement. That, that's a, you know, and we're enforcing that, that's a bylaw-type issue, a zone regulation, not a charter. I mean, I, I think it should maybe get referred to general government to review to see where it goes into the conservation bylaw or one of our bylaws. But when, to Counsel Marcati's point, our charter is our constitution about how we run our town and processes. And this really talks about corporations and if you violate it, you're going to be found guilty, shall be guilty of an offense. That, that's all a bylaw regulation-type thing, not a charter, in my opinion. Now, you, I would, if you want, I would send this to Attorney Goldberg and just say, hey, do you believe this is a charter? Or should this really go to a regulation? Just have, give a quick review of it, not spend a lot of money, but just say, what are your thoughts? We believe, many of us on council believe this should be a bylaw-type issue, not a charter. Why not send it to her and not waste time? If, if she says, well, you could go either way, then we, maybe we debate it. But I, I think personally, ship it off to her if she's already doing a review to say, this was offered as a, a quick summary and does it belong, where does it belong? That's my point on, on that one. I don't know if anybody else agrees, but, and then to the second point, again, to the previous speaker, I, I certainly share his concern about getting individuals to serve on various committees. And I think we took a look at some of those committees that had seven members, drop it to five because of the fact that we can't get members. I think I was pretty vocal on the liquor board to increase it to five. And my purpose on that was that, yes, we have a hard time filling an alternate position, but when you have the same three individuals, which I, I thank them for their service to the town because it is hard to find. But we have been unable to fill an alternate position. And quite frankly, why would anybody want to be an alternate if you're just going to sit there and not be able to participate in the discussion or take any votes? If I, if I want to become a member of a committee like that, I want to be able to participate and not just sit there in case one person doesn't show up. So I think that was my, my tackle, my, my position on expanding that group and to give a broader sense of our community, especially if we're going to increase and we have legislation to increase the number of liquor licenses, that's a little more oversight. So that's my thought on that. But I do share the sentiment on the getting people to serve. But I do share the sentiment on the getting people to serve. But that board specifically was my reasoning for try to increase the number on that. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I do agree with Counsel Jovan. I, I actually think this may be a bylaw here, but obviously, a lawyer would probably be best, but it's not a bad read, it's just, I think this is, takes a lot more information that, than just tonight to, to pass it on. I would recommend, because we keep going back and forth and back and forth, and how we're going to do this. As you stated earlier, the minutia stuff, the commas, the periods, stuff like that, we can review once we get a real clean copy of the draft, and we can go as council members and say, yes or no, thumbs up or down. When it comes to the bigger things, from the transfers to living here for the town manager, stuff like that, I think we should be able to take a vote, which we did with the, the living here, as far as the town manager, I think that's, that's already a done deal. But all these other bigger items, as Counsel Marquetti had mentioned, stuff like that, we should really take one at a time and go, this is what we agree with or we, we don't agree with. Now, I wouldn't mind at the very end, when we're all said and done, that we, we, if, if the legal council is stating we can make the decision on one large vote, because I don't think, just because you disagree with one thing, you should vote entirely against or for the, the, the recommended charter changes. But then we, we as a council vote, all right, this is what, we're good, we're good to go with, or we're not, and then we move that forward to legal, through, to the legislation, and then move it on from there. But I don't think this is, I agree with not rushing it. I do know we've had plenty of time to have a discussion. I think there is confusion in between sometimes, maybe lost in translation, whatever it may be, but I, I think that may be the way to go. I would recommend not putting it on the next agenda. I would recommend waiting until April's agenda is to put it on, so we have a little bit more time to make sure we have a very clean copy of this, and we're not rushing through it. And if it goes on, you know, if it goes, obviously, it'll probably pass June, but the next voting cycle, that's fine with me at the same time, but that's my recommendation to the chair at this point and the rest of the council. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Dow, then Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. You know, it's, it's good to keep checking the change we made and make sure it's made in the right way, we all agree on it. But it's not good to people make a decision on a certain thing, and then something happened down the road personally, and now they're going to change it, because one of the reason. Regarding the liquor board, we changed all the board, not only the liquor board, but they're focusing on only one board, because they have a personal issue with some businessman in town. And I believe this is a more political and controlling, for the businesses in town have liquor, to have a three-member for decade, like 10 years and more, and we can't get more people on, because this is what it is, only three people, they, they don't want to leave, thank you for serving, but we can't get more new people with a new mind, open mind, and we're going to keep the same people forever, and if they have a, a personal problem or issue, and I'm going to say it, discrimination problem too, we can't move forward, because we only have a three-member, and this is, this is not right at all. We vote on it, everybody agree, and then we come back talking on the same thing. We're wasting our time, we have better thing to do, and we need to move on, not taking everything person in the town. I think more issue we need to discuss that, but a personal thing. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I'm sorry, Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. On the terms of process and how we handle going, my personal belief would be, anything that, any section that we didn't make major changes, or it was just grammatical changes, we vote as one, and then the remaining sections, which have some sort of language or character change, that would actually change the way it runs and functions, I say we go one by one, section by section by section, and do it that way. That way, we do it clean, as cleanly as possible, there's no issues, everything's blanket, everything's transparent, and we do it right. We take our time and we debate each issue.
Counsel Lozlo?
Just a quick second. Debate is healthy. I know that I'm a big advocate of department heads and local preference and, and residency clause and that, and I continue, I want to amend, again, at some point, I'd bring that discussion up. As far as the, the members of boards and commissions and stuff, we've been experimenting with that over the years, for 30 years. More people on a board, at one point, we only had one liquor license member, the town manager. It was the only one in the state of Massachusetts. The charter commission, elected charter commission, wanted to do three. If the three needs to be adjusted to five, that's fine, and I'm sure that there would be people that would want to get onto that board, even though you don't fill the alternate. Nobody wants to be the alternate. They want to be a bride and not a bridesmaid when it comes to that stuff. But I do say that I agree on the process. Let's go line by line, it's not going to take us long. Part of the stuff that's done is just going to be boilerplate, prosody, dot the i. And then the other meat and potatoes of what we want to change, we can debate further, which I don't think is going to take a real long time. But again, I agree with Counselor Adams, let's move forward, let's not really, you know, beat this thing to death, but at the same time, don't rush it, let's get it right. Thank you.
Counsel Marquetti, then Steves, then Adams.
Okay, thank you. I have no problem with increasing the boards, and I wasn't trying to single out the liquor licensing board, it just was part of that. There were two changes made. One was on all the boards, and then it singled out the liquor board. If the council wants to increase the boards, I have no problem with that. I just think that we do have a hard time getting people to serve, and it's going to, I don't see how increasing the size of the board is going to help any, to get more, more people to serve on these boards. It was a good idea to reduce the planning board, because they do have a problem when they vote, they have to have a unanimous five votes to pass anything. So I thought that was a good idea. I'm not trying to single out the liquor board, I'm not being prejudiced against anyone, it's not discrimination. I just was mentioning it because it was one of the changes here on all the boards. But I do respect everybody's opinion up here. Thank you.
Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a follow-up on what you were saying there, Mike. I think a lot of the changes for this particular section were done because of some of these, some of these boards have had some serious issues with meeting quorum, like conservation specifically. But I think with the liquor board and the zoning board, it's because, I know the way I think of it is that when you have two, three people on a board, it's, it's way too small, it creates situations where you end up having conflicts of interest and all kinds of stuff that people, you know, you end up having, in some cases, two people doing, making decisions that affect everybody in town, whether it's over a specific license or whatever, it doesn't really make any difference, but affects everybody ultimately. And I think always having more voices there makes a huge, can make a huge difference. I'm, I agree with you, that we have issues getting people, and I think that's an issue of, of simply making a greater effort to beat the bushes and get people out there, because there are people in the community that would want, would want to serve if they knew they existed, if we can find them. That's always an issue. And the other concern that I had was the fact that, I noticed scanning through the document, that several of the changes we made, like for example, the town manager residency section is not in here.
This isn't the final?
But the, the version that I have in the computer that was sent into our package is not the version that we have, that we voted on, like for that, for that section.
From the minutes of February...
The last meeting?
The last meeting, was it? Were, were sent to Attorney Goldberg as Sections 4-2-5 and 4-2-6, I think it was, and those were incorporated into the, the package that I should be getting this evening.
Okay, so, so Norah doesn't, didn't have them?
No, Norah didn't have it, no, it was sent, right, we got it out of the minutes from the meeting that was, that was voted on that evening.
I just wanted to clarify, because the documents we're looking at aren't the documents we were voting on.
Correct.
Okay.
This is, this was the latest we had as of the time of the, of the publishing of the, the packet.
Okay.
Okay. All set?
Yep.
Great. Counselor Adams?
Not to belabor, I've just, Mr. Chair, I'll just, I'll just help work with you on this and see if we can tag-team it, and then from there, we'll bring it up when, when it's ready to go.
All right, anyone else? All right, then I have some questions. I, I want to be, I want to be clear, so I want to make sure that I'm okay, because I've been trying to follow seven people. We've got, it looks like, two, possibly three hot-button topics, in terms of sections of the charter that people want to talk about, not necessarily the whole thing, not necessarily most of it, but just two or three sections. And I'll say, we'll talk, we'll look at 10-12-1, for instance, just for a second, so we can have an example for the sake of argument, on the transfers. Do we want to talk about that tonight? Or do we want to set up a meeting where we're going through section by section, and when the section comes up, we discuss it then and argue it then? Or do we want to talk about some things tonight, get that out of the way, and then I can get it to the attorney and get, get whatever our decision is incorporated into, into the document? Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would feel more comfortable waiting for the interpretations to come back from legal council, so that way we know what the exact wording we're debating is. Right now, like has been pointed out, it has, some of the wording isn't even included in our packet tonight. I wouldn't feel even comfortable talking about it until we have that wording from the attorney. That's my perspective on it.
In terms of?
Like the section with the manager having a local requirement, it's not even in our documents tonight, so how can we have a substantive discussion, if we don't know what the final outcome's going to be? I would feel more comfortable waiting for that interpretation from our last meeting, and any additional change we have, to go to the attorney and be approved and come forward for us, then we can have a substantive discussion about all the changes, because there might be other changes that come through that we didn't see, talking about this whole process, that the attorney's like, actually, what about this, this, and this, that laws got updated and we have to change this language? So I would feel more comfortable until, by waiting until we have the final document.
As far as, okay, all right. Counsel Lozlo?
Yeah, I, I was just going to follow on the same lines. We were looking for legal input before we discussed it again. I would wait for legal input and then, and go from there. I was on the same lines as Counsel Ryan.
Okay, because, because, you're welcome. All right, Section 4-2-5 and 4-2-6 was new language that we were including from debate that we had, and that's going to be incorporated into the document. But the 10-12-1, for instance, and 12-3-3 are already incorporated into the document, and we could talk about them tonight, because the question is, is do we keep what's incorporated into the document now, or do we revert back to the, the standing document? Or do you want to hold off on that? Counsel Lozlo?
I would like to hold off on that. In looking at what we have to do tonight, on Agenda Item Number Six, I would rather hold off on that, and let's tackle that, we can get out a decent hour.
I agree with Counsel Lozlo.
However, sorry.
Counsel Marquetti?
However, Mr. Chairman, through you, 12-3-3 was deleted. At one point, we did delete that. We reverted back to the original charter. So that shouldn't even have gone to the attorney, I don't think.
So it should revert back to the original 12-3-3, is what you're saying?
Right. We voted on that, I believe, yep.
I'd like to clarify, I actually think, I think we more consented on it, we didn't actually vote on it. The only vote we took was actually on the, was on the town manager's residency.
That's what I believe.
But we did consent on getting rid of that language. I think we were in general agreement to do so, but we never formally voted on it.
As a follow-up, please? I, in my mind, I thought we, I saw a document, whether it was taken out, I thought I saw that. No? Okay.
I, no, I can't remember. I'm not checking.
No, there's been a lot of meetings and a lot of discussion.
I'd say it's either way. I, I'm okay waiting or talking about it tonight, either way is fine.
All right. Well, all right, then should I make sure that this, if we're getting a new document, and we're incorporating in what we need to incorporate in, is it, is it the councils wish that in 12-3-3, that section in red be removed, and that we revert 12-3-3 back to the current charter?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Very good. All right, I'll make sure it happens.
I think Counsel Jovan had, did you have a question or something?
Well, I, just to, if, yeah. For the big, the big.
Okay. Counsel Jovan?
Yeah, just as a follow-up to the previous, Counsel Ryan, Counsel Lozlo, I think too, waiting will also have an answer about Counselor, Counsel Steves' proposition, so let's debate everything in one night and put it to bed and get a good copy.
Okay, and Counselor Adams and I will double-team this, and we'll make sure it all gets done properly. And as long as, as long as the council is all set with taking time, the appropriate amount of time, and, and being diligent about it and all, then I have no problem with that whatsoever. Counsel Jovan?
I'm sorry. Is it also possible, if you have that final document, for us to debate in Counsel Steves' whatever amendment? I think that should be a published, public input.
Absolutely.
To put it out to the public, to say, this is your final opportunity. If we're going to take a vote on how we're going to send it forward, we've said, let's have a public, some kind of public input. Let's advertise it if we're talking about later in April to try to get that. Let's advertise, if anybody wants to come forward that has any questions about what we're doing with the charter and our final votes, let's have, there may be one, two, or nobody here, but at least we put it out there, so nobody can say, hey, I didn't know you were going to make changes of any, but I, we keep saying it, let's advertise it, let's just do it and be done with it. Thank you.
All right, very good. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree. I, when I spoke about doing something in April, as far as that, that'd be the individual votes, but it wouldn't be the clean copy, because obviously, it's going to change. Then once we take those votes, then we can go and put in a clean draft copy, and then get it out to the public areas where we need to get them out to, so they can take a look at it, advertise it. I don't believe we have to have a public hearing, but we could have a public meeting about it if we needed to. But we could put it in the library, in the police department, all that kind of stuff, just so that people that want to look at it, they can. And then, then maybe in May or something like that, take the final vote, if, if it goes that route. But one step at a time, I think. Lot to this.
Any further discussion? Very good. Agenda Item Number Six, vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Act Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection A2, to discuss strategy with, with respect to negotiation with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the town manager.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lozlo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams, is it yes? Counsel Daniel?
Yes. All right, town council will, will adjourn from executive session and will not reconvene an open session.